Here.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan.
Here.
You can carry it here.
First, heading is approval of the agenda. Will be approved.
Second.
The. We have a discussion, have a vote. That is approved. Take this to consent agenda.
We have approved.
Second, I'm Dean and Brian. And you have a second to vote. That is approved. Takes us to the public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those that was on the agenda in mass communication. Your comments at five minutes or less. Is there anyone here in the public forum?
Okay. Um. He was complaining about the last bit along with it. And. Can I work late? Stuff all the people and everything. I would like to have a key and we get a dump place. Cause I work late. And. And the dump place will be open by fall. Cause that's the weather not it.
Yeah, I don't think it'll, it won't be this fall.
I've been down here.
Now, Louie, we've explained before that.
Okay.
We need to wait for the oil side to be ready.
Go past track. At the end. Put our pieces out. That should be done. That's our part of the process and that's the end. You know. And uh. And I think the people pay taxes in this town. Should have a little bit more. We should go towards streets. We some people go towards streets more. Do pay taxes in this town. A little bit more taxes go towards the street. And then when you do get that dump place, cause I. I didn't talk to him instead of coming very long with it and then we made a guy. One that um. The one that punches the concrete. The one that punches the sap asphalt.
He's talking about the.
The asphalt, the concrete that's down on the dump station.
Concrete pressure that's down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, utilizing the rock and stuff to spread out around the dump to make it easier. Like to do a dump site or yardways utilizing that stuff, but having to purchase more utilizing what we have.
Yeah, that, that rock is the, we can't keep that exposed. We have to.
Oh, yeah. He told me that you could probably use. Right now and then. Reusing.
We are going to be reusing. That's why we're running it up.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So. Then I have to keep, cause I'm with all the people. Sometimes work late. Until sunset. So I'm gonna get that dump place back. Have it like that and keep ways. But you people don't like.
We're so far away from having something. I can't comment on that.
Well, man, it's not gonna be open by fall. It should be open this by next Sunday.
We, we can't open anything up until we actually have land. We can't open, we can't do anything with the current site that we have. Because there's a bunch of asphalt and concrete as you.
They're playing over it.
Yeah, and that's.
Well, I'm glad it's right now. That might just right now. I think it's well now. Whatever the credit. Then it should be have an open for people to just.
And Louie.
That's gonna be open to public when we get that back.
And Louie, before we talked about, when we were talking about this, we told the existing site is we are not able to use that again. Because of what is being built there. And the houses that are around it. So we're not going to be able to use that existence like we would, we were able to.
Well, why?
So that adds up to that's one.
We even have to.
Because we need to get rid of that, get it out. Yeah.
Need to put cameras in for the gates. I see you got eight there already.
We did.
That's a good idea. I've got cameras. Good idea. That's shit going down in the first place. Put a gate out so people wanna take stuff down. You're like, they did it for.
Yeah.
Cause we need a dump place. See my family is the. My neighbor lives there. They live at the age of five. This kind of budget. He blanchers and everything. But he doesn't know where to take them. So I hope because I don't play crap for myself. I don't want you to give that to the way.
Okay, so with that, we will close the public forum and move into old business. Old Business Day, ordinance number ten forty-five, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, in order to providing for the division of taxes, levy on impactful property in the May twenty twenty-three edition of the Nevada Urban Renewal Area for seventeen question four oh three point one nine. Dakota, Iowa, third and final reading.
Move to through.
Second.
Thing, the. You know, discussion, have a vote. Approved. Takes us to B, Resolution number one oh seven, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing approving a certain loan agreement providing for the issuance of two million, three hundred eighty thousand dollar general obligation urban renewal bonds in series two, twenty twenty-three A, and providing for the levy of ten to three thousand.
Move to through.
Okay.
You, Andy. And you have a second to have a vote. Approved. It's B, prepared question number twenty-four, for lease earnings, plan improvements, base two, and only in terms of depression incorporated in the amount of seven hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars, made by them. We approve. Second, it's been time. And you have a second to have a vote. Approved. Day of prepared question number fourteen, for waste improvements, plan improvements, day three, from rumorang, an amount of two hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. We approve. You have a second to have a vote. To E, prepared question number ninety, for waste water improvements, day four, from contract construction of L L P, an amount of five hundred forty-four thousand, an employee dollars, and one. Second, from Brian. You know, second to have a vote. Approved. Takes F, your changer number one, for steel house, and E, and C, L L P, in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, five hundred nine dollars.
Move to through.
Second, from Dean. And you have a session to have a vote. With proof of A, new business A, through five days, special class C, retail alcohol license, the whole lighter D B A, Nick fifty trailer, six week for downtown Harmer's Market, six one to six five. And is that all in one? Oh, not. You have to pull it under. That's the beginning.
I would give you a list of stuff.
Okay, yep, first one. It's from five. You know, second to have a vote. First, send takes us to approve five day special class C, retail alcohol license. Nine hundred D V A, next fifty trailers, six two for downtown Harmer's Market, six fifteen to six nineteen.
Move to through.
Second, and Brian.
But we have to approve this every few weeks or there was something I never liked.
I think they normally get five day.
Yeah, so they had to, they had to change something in their license more than they agree for. That's why they weren't approved the last time.
Okay.
Um, but I believe that, now I think that's up to the council. I don't know. I hear it was like what we decided. I believe this is follows. We will have to. So.
Here. So. They did. I remember if you wanted to see no one, but you can get it to go through the agenda. Yes, good. Five to the top. Just the rest of all I have. Whatever works. And. Okay, looks like we did it in one second, but I don't think it's that. You have a second to roll call. Please go. Approved. Takes your group purchase of sewer inspection camera for both works department. And you want to see what's down in place.
Do you guys have any questions on the inspection camera? So what this is, is a. Truck trailer. Similar to this. On. We have a woman with a bunch. Yeah, and that's my next point. Um, the bill there for C I T, get you that in there, your packet. For four point nine hours, we had them out was about two thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars. And we didn't end up finding them or getting that stored in need to go. This piece of equipment would uh. Hold this out in the long run. Trying to figure out on maple. Or not, or we just plug it. And this here is a camera. Questions about. These right then.
Uh, Mr. Cubble. So how long, how long does one of these last? Is it?
Um, that is.
You know, it's like seven, ten years. Well, this, but you can about get my cameras on it. So.
So if you get better cameras, it might be able to.
Well, we're gonna turn it through or plug into the system. But on average, you know, contracted some engineers, the city, open long.
Yeah, well, it's not like a computer works out of date in nine months.
No, and he got the software package. So there, it's just the basic package on it.
How much is the actual camera on? We're buying the whole kit, right?
What's that?
We're buying like the whole kit.
Everything, yeah.
How much is just the camera?
Oh, that one was nineteen thousand, right?
So with, with the trailer. We have our. Mobile office. Everything then will transfer into our field maps. So if we're locating, we can find a tab located, market on our. Field maps. Because we question all the time, where does my tab go? Where's this? So we can kind of, you know, get a better idea of what we're looking. Losing the budget.
So um. The invoice that he has right here for C I T sewer solutions, this is just one invoice and we probably called them and the sewers get it out. Um, by.
Hydroplane. I, I think I added up around thirty forty-five thousand. But you also gotta remember, I don't like calling these people because I know how much it is. We rush to draw it down in there. Round it. This is a twenty, I lost on forty-five thousand, just I think it's been told, but. Like I said, we don't utilize it enough because of the expense. Four hundred forty dollars per ton mile. It's not something. Small pipe can we deal with? Or. Think of more over thirty. So you just get that wheels in and things without it.
I did have some experience with some of the previous community that I was in. I believe uh, they bought their machine in two thousand fifteen. I believe they're still using the same system. And it works amazing. I mean, they have videos. You can attach it to your G I S. Uh, well, at that point, they burned them on DVDs and did it that way, but you can export on your G I S. And our guys will know exactly where the issues are at all times. You'll be able to get all of our lines reran. And we'll be able to create more of a long-term fix for all of our sewers and aging sewers. So I do think it's uh, very valuable for the city of the big asset and I. I'm doing forty-five thousand. I do feel that we all have a claim to C I T sewers a lot.
Yeah, and I, this, this piece we can utilize more. Uh, like our storm sewers, we have safe holder on these carts. Oh, right now, we just, we dig down and figure out what we got. What's going on. Personally, we could send a camera in. This also includes a footage camera. Just on a reel. Basically, you take the, the head off that, off the tractor, and you can push it through. So if you're doing a twenty-foot. Run, you can. Take it down there.
This goes up to two hundred and fifty views.
Yes. Any other?
You motion?
I'm going to do through. Option one. From mid Iowa.
Second. Option by Brian, second by Dan, to accept the quote option one. You have a session.
I just want to thank you guys for your support here lately with all the new equipment. The guys appreciate it. Just kind of pack it along. Thank you.
And now. I got the tape off.
My hair extinguisher green brush.
Thanks for the camera. Good. Yeah. PD is for longer driving and.
Thank you. Thank you. So uh. You may recall, uh, last year we got state grant. We applied for the fire prevention and safety grant through FEMA. Last year, we were awarded a. Sixteen thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars, forty-seven dollars with our cost share being eight hundred and nine dollars fifty-three cents. So basically seventy thousand dollars. Uh, our goal, what we had found is the virtual reality got more brain certain climate help. Uh, absolutely.
The Bullock's extinguisher training prop is a LED screen. Uh, we put together a partner company, a couple of packages, the preferred package. Uh, what we found in the basic package is thirteen thousand dollars. We'd be option number two. Uh. Cadillac, so the Cadillac version, option number three. What we might not perform one, we found with using other departments, like system, is that one fire extinguisher is not enough. Cause it has to have a little bit of. So. We're running. There'll be forty people through this train. In our. Different places. So. You see that. So what we're requesting is a trumbull of number one, which is a monitor. So the two fire thing, you know, screen remote engine board, turns the flame off. Carrying case would be for the extinguisher, three or four, amount sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, with the additional amount. Our goal is to go after one or two things. FEMA will uh, spend the, the remaining amount on fire prevention related. If you are proven the need for or by the. We also prove the need for smoke alarms. We still solve smoke alarm very well. So. We can add a little bit of money not to over the region. So it's great to get a federal grant like this. Got a couple of, we've got a lot of stuff. With that. I didn't tell you that their own. Sales of the system. They're all, they're simulating the system, but they're adhered more force. Fire department. Part of her scale, the type. Extinguish system, but not the most for. Yeah, citizens trying to. Thank you.
We go through the question one. Second. I'm getting this and Brian. And you have a second to vote. To E, Resolution number one, wait, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, resolution, special major subdivision, finding an area flat, and it's five eight, and waiting for town. Move to through. Second. You have a second. And you have a second to vote. First. Takes us to. New addition number one, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, for resolutions, including the final five. On this brown subdivision, five of these two mile corporate limits, so we can't. Move to through. Second, and you Dan. You have a second to vote. Move. Approved. Takes us to half, for consumer tempors, is from making agreement, or is it name chat, nonparticular regulation, will it be voted to allow part in certain areas, both of the. Move to through.
Second.
The part. And I'm about to vote. Approved. Takes us to report, starting with our.
Um, I was absent last week and I'm just like.
Kind of a good. Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. So I don't have. Actually, I want to share, um, I've been talking with Larry Stevens earlier this day, and he informed me that pricing for the construction that we're planning on starting in June. It's kind of. Absolutely not. It's too good. I still use more than contract. It's more around twelve percent increase and we're expecting more of a five percent. So working on that, um, as far as I know, everything is still about that. Which I have about like fourteen. More than us fourteen. I don't know. Just three questions.
So my report, you think that wanted to congratulate Atria Council on another good Memorial Day observance and although it was scraping the bottom of the barrel for the guest speaker, the keynote speaker did a pretty good job over there too. Um. Also, railroad, we had a meeting with the Union Pacific here. They brought their agenda here. The county was here, the sheriff's department here, but continuing to work with them on some of our railroad issues we'll be having. Continue to follow up from that, whether we bring in more people on their team. Um, but they clearly know they have some issues over here. So I think that will hopefully help. Continue for them to be responsive and then I wanted to congratulate Emily and Manchurian on having a night. But that's for the Jackson Highway group that came through on the way to their conference. There were folks from every state and province of the highway came through and. Um, June G M and attended the conference and said that there were other groups that are going to be coming through because they have such a great time here. And then also to put on the radar, the military convoys, this is like a highway twenty eighteen, this is in Jefferson, twenty twenty-four, so they're gonna come here and do a stop with a. We have, our goal is to make Nevada stop when people do tourism on the two highways and done a good job of that, putting their attention. So we had Tom Richards dressed up like Thomas Jefferson and give a little speech out here and they, they kept talking about that and so it confirmed the neat things and definitely showed that there's some highway heritage here for them to be part of when they enter.
Actually said that they never had.
Naveen was there too.
He knows.
And he. Cause Marty's better. And the president of the slinking highway also is here to do kind of a handshake, the new thing that you okay. Council report.
Uh, we have more than you're looking at. We did a committee meeting. Everything's going good. The car shows. For that, this year, starting to ramp up. We got another Friday night thing that we're trying to work on. What Brian talked about that people want to do. If you want.
Yeah, we are gonna chuck ball on Friday night. We were just kind of waiting for the golden ticket, so to speak, within boarding forward to their own property. We did get that last week. We have one more key then to get done. What we, where they announced it, that that is a pretty important part of it, that we see both. What we get all. And what we able to. Kind of just build on the whole, let it highway days, then make it better and better if we can. So. Hopefully about next game, I'll have a more definite, definite for everybody.
You're moving Marty to reprise. They're running again.
Yeah.
Third reports. Okay. Then.
One quick update for you tonight. Uh, the Hattery Shelter is, well, that's really the completion. So the structure is up. Everyone was up today. Form is, uh, Chris forms up for tomorrow morning. And then I believe that Jeremy will be there next week to get the level pulled down and then we'll do something on the ground outside when it should be done. So I want to share that with you. Um, other than that, thank you for those who came out. I think we got, everybody's been able to see the field pass now with feet on the ground. So. Appreciate you taking time on your baby, rocking your part of that. And then it'll be closer if you want to do that and please let us know in the face. Any questions?
I have a whole.
Is there anything?
Can do that.
Oh, yeah, well, something.
Thank you.
If you haven't checked your email, I just, I'm sure these are already. What was that case?
Number four, man. Yeah, my report.
What did you have today? We have a percolant situation place yesterday. Actually working that in order to try your resolution. You've done the biggest update I can. Well, if you guys have more of those things for. Report. We're just gonna see how many questions.
Run them up. About time.
Should have my report in your packet. Not only have too much to add unless there's any question. Are you getting it? Before you go to close that. We have closing session, just going to Iowa code. Five one hundred to evaluate successful competency for an individual who's appointment hiring, forming the district, and then when it's due for a needless or irreparable injury, it's going to be due with the patient, and that means.
We have quote section, extreme to Iowa, quote, one point five one, I need to evaluate that stuff, competency, for an individual's appointment, hiring, forming the district, and, uh, when you, for a needless, nor for a full injury, that can be made with space, and that can be made to request, both. Move to approve. Hmm, part of.